The City Council has just returned to open session after convening closed session to conduct collective bargaining negotiations as authorized by State Government Article, Section 3-305, Subsections B and 9. The time is now 6:08 and this open session is adjourned. This time is now 6:09 and I do call the legislative session of the Salisbury City Council to order. This time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag of the four justices, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
All right. At this time, we have the city clerk review the agenda. I will entertain a motion to appro-- sorry. Yes, Ms. English?
On the agenda this evening, we have one consent agenda item, we have an award of bid, two award of bids, declaration of surplus, one resolution, and one ordinance.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Just a move.
Second.
And proposed changes or amendments to the agenda. Okay. All those in favor of adopting the agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. The agenda is adopted. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
President Doughty, can you do the invocation before that?
Oh, I am so sorry. Yes. This time, we'll ask Pastor Greg to give the city invocation.
Thank you. It's always a privilege. Always a privilege, yes.
My apologies again.
You're fine. Our Creator God, our most relevant, celebrated heavenly Father, we come before you with our heart of thanksgiving and praise lifted. It is you who is the giver and the sustainer of life. It is through your Son, Jesus Christ, that we find the radiance of your glory, the exact representation of your being, sustaining us by the powerful Word of God. Thank you. We praise you. We thank you for the wonderful representatives of our city who adjudicate business on the behalf of our citizens. They enable progress and favor, and we acknowledge in advance of these proceedings that we need you. With your ever-abiding presence, there is thoughtful and respectful civil discourse necessary for our government to work. Enable us, within the leaders of this great city and the citizens of this city, the ability to engage in dignified and productive debate. May we, O God, demonstrate a culture of grace rather than the devolution of communication. Help us to normalize one of the key characteristics of our faith dynamic, that is, the essence of love. Help us to build bridges and never walls. And when we leave here tonight, may we be encouraged. May our city prosper. May we forever find within the guidance of your glory what we find in Psalm 112. How joyful are those who fear the Lord and delight in obeying his commands. Their children will be successful everywhere. That's our prayer for the children of Salisbury. Our entire generation of godly people will be blessed. That's our prayer. Bless our city. They themselves will experience wealth. Their good deeds will last forever. Light will shine in darkness for those who are godly. They are generous. They are compassionate. They are righteous. Good comes to those who lend money generously and conduct their business affairs righteously. Such people will not be overcome by evil, but will overcome evil with good. Those who are righteous will be well remembered, and those who do so will not fear bad news, but they will constantly and confidently trust in you, Lord. Care for our city. They share freely in generosity with those in needs, and their good deeds will be remembered forever. They will have influence, and they will have honor. It is in the words of Psalm 112 that we end this day, and at the end of the day, these things are the most important directives. Each of us have significant value and significant place and great influence. Let it be so tonight, and let a beautiful day dawn for us tomorrow in our society, filled with hope, faith, and love. And the greatest of these, of course, we know, is love. We ask these things in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you for that. And again, just as a reminder, this is the March 24, 2025 legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. And in event of an emergency, we ask that everyone remain calm and exit through the doors to your right, proceed to the right and down the stairs. If that hallway is blocked, please exit to your left, down the hall, and down the stairs. Do not use the elevator, and let someone know if you need assistance. We do ask that everyone please silence your cellphones, and we will proceed. Thank you, Ms. English, for that reminder. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Ms. English?
We have one item on the consent agenda this evening. It is the September 16, 2024 work session minutes, which was included in your packets.
Thank you, Ms. English. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. This time, we'll move to our award of bids. Invite Ms. Miller to the podium. I will entertain a motion to award the bid ITB 25-118 Salisbury Fire Department Pumper Engine to Atlantic Emergency Solutions as recommended. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Miller?
Very good. Thank you. So I'm here tonight to seek award of bid approval from the Salisbury City Council for the solicitations I'll bring to your attention tonight. The city followed requiring required bidding practices as defined by the Salisbury Charter and the Municipal Code of Ordinances, and publicly posted the solicitations for the city's competitively bid procurements on the City of Salisbury's procurement portal, Planet Bids, and the state of Maryland's website, eMarylandMarketPlaceAdvantage. The first one this evening is for ITB, invitation to bid number 25-118. It's for the Salisbury Fire Department. It's a fire engine. I do have the specifications in your packet. This is a cooperative contract from HGAC Buy, contract FS12-23 for fire apparatus and related vehicles. The contractor is Atlantic Emergency Solution and Solutions, and the contract is valid through November 30, 2027. The total cost for this fire engine is $1,283,886. The funding was appropriated in the FY25 City of Salisbury Budget Schedule B. The account that I noted in your packet is the account number that will be funded for this purchase. Now, the purchasing authority for this is per City of Salisbury Charter, Section SC16-3, item number nine, General Policy of Competitive Bidding Exceptions, which states that competitive bidding is not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance. That's contracts in which the city receives a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. Now, the Houston-Galveston Area Council, HGAC, is a unit of local government and a political subdivision of the state of Texas. All products offered through HGAC Buy have been awarded by virtue of a public procurement process. The contracts then awarded by the HGAC Board are then made available to local governments nationwide through the HGAC Buy Cooperative Purchasing Program. We, the City of Salisbury, have an established inter-local contract with HGAC Buy, which sets out the conditions, work, excuse me, requirements, and processes of the procurement. So the departmental memo and the HGAC Buy worksheet provide further details for you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Are there any questions or discussion from the council? The motion on the floor is to award the bid ITB 25-118 Salisbury Fire Department Pumper Engine to Atlantic Emergency Solutions. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. The bid for ITB-118 Salisbury Fire Department Pumper Engine is awarded to Atlantic Emergency Solutions. I will entertain a motion to award the bid ITB 25-116 Salisbury Fire Department Station One Kitchen Remodel to Wayland as recommended.
Second.
Ms. Miller?
Awesome. This is ITB, invitation to bid number 25-116 for the Salisbury Fire Department Station One Kitchen Remodel. This will provide all labor, equipment, materials, and incidentals to remodel the kitchen at Salisbury Fire Department Station One. We did post this particular bid on January 31 and opened the bid on February 14 of 2025. I did give you a little bit more information about how we got to this point. This was quite a labor of love to get contractors to respond. It seems to be a job that's a little too small for some of the big guys and a little too big for some of the smaller guys. So we really went to great lengths to do vendor outreach and so on and so forth to get to this point. Wayland would be the contracted vendor for a total cost of $145,080, and the account that's noted in your packet is the account that will be funded.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Are there any questions or discussion from the council? The motion on the floor is to award the bid ITB 25-116 Salisbury Fire Department Station One Kitchen Remodel to Wayland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. The bid for ITB-25-116 Salisbury Fire Department Station One Kitchen Remodel is awarded to Wayland. Thank you, Ms. Miller. I will entertain a motion to declare defibrillators, radios, and radio accessories from the Salisbury Fire Department through the method of disposal. A public auction, if not saleable, will be abandoned, destroyed, scrapped, or otherwise disposed of. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Miller?
The only other information that I have is in your council packet where the Salisbury Fire Department has provided, the list of the items.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Any questions or discussion from the council? The motion on the floor is to declare defibrillators, radios, and radio accessories from the Salisbury Fire Department through the method of disposal of public auction, if not saleable, will be abandoned, destroyed, scrapped, or otherwise disposed of. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. The above referenced items are now deemed surplus and to be disposed of as mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we'll pivot to our resolutions. I will entertain--
Yeah, the old-- People still work, right?
Entertain a motion. I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3384.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. English?
Resolution Number 3384 is a resolution of the City of Salisbury to show support for the Bird City Maryland Initiative.
Ms. English? Are there any questions or discussion from the council? Motion on the floor is to approve Resolution Number 3384. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. Resolution Number 3384 is approved. We'll pivot to our ordinances. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2928 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Good evening, everyone. Ordinance Number 2928, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment to appropriate funds for the 2024 and 2025 Maryland Folk Festivals. This is before you for first reading.
Any questions or discussion from the council?
No.
Motion on the floor is to approve ordinance Number 2928. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. The motion passes, and ordinance 2928 is approved. This time, we'll pivot to our public comments portion of the meeting. Again, those persons will have three minutes to speak on any topic. Please enter the podium or walk to the podium, state your name, and if you are a city resident. Mr. Kitzler will have the time on the screen there for your convenience.
Great. Good evening. My name is Matt Drew. I live at 301 North Claremont Drive in Salisbury. I'm here today to address a critical issue that's affecting the Salisbury City zoning process, specifically the inability to approve variances for increased residential density. There was a recent court ruling that exposed a conflict between our city code and state law, and it's preventing the Board of Appeals from considering certain types of variances, including those related to increased density. This is particularly problematic because Salisbury's current zoning code requires a special exception for density increases for all apartments in the Apartment Standards section of the code, the Riverfront Redevelopment Districts 1 and 2, and the Central Business District. Right now, there's no legal process to approve these requests, effectively presenting a huge barrier to new development in key growth areas of our city. The City Council has the power and the responsibility to resolve this issue by amending the Salisbury zoning code to align with state law and restore the Board of Zoning Appeals authority. I propose the following three-phase roadmap to ensure a swift resolution. First, an immediate action by May 30 to direct the city attorney and planning department to review the court ruling and draft necessary zoning code amendments. And then, second, hold a council work session to review these proposed changes and refine them as needed. The second phase would be a legislative process from June to September of this year, where you would be introducing the zoning amendment for public review and discussion, hold a public hearing to gather input from residents and stakeholders, and vote on the final approval to enact the revised zoning code. And then, last of the three phases would be implementation from October moving forward. Here, you would be updating the city processes, training staff, and officially reopen the zoning variance process for density-related requests. If any of these efforts to resolve this issue are already underway, I urge the council to ensure transparency and keep the public informed. Developers, business owners, and residents deserve clear communication about the steps being taken to restore a functional zoning process. Without this, uncertainty will continue to hinder investment and development in Salisbury. Council members, this is not just a technical issue. It's a fundamental breakdown of our zoning process, and it threatens Salisbury's ability to grow responsibly. If we do nothing, projects requiring density variances will remain stalled, particularly in our downtown, riverfront, and high-density housing areas, the very places we should be encouraging smart, sustainable development. I urge you to move forward with these amendments without delay and to keep the public informed in every step of the way. Thank you for the time and listening to me. Take care.
Mr. Drew?
Juan Seeger's, citizen, Salisbury, Maryland. Now, last month, we were celebrating Black History Month, and we gave shout-out to a number of people, and I realized sometime later that I had not acknowledged Shanice Shields, who followed me on the City Council, and Councilwoman Rachel Polk, who also was, I believe, the only black person, black woman, that is to have been elected in an at-large district. And I'd also like to give a shout-out to Carolyn Hall, who was elected at the time that I was elected. Again, I ask that perhaps some of those people who served on the council could share some of their visions, particularly the black people, of what you would like to accomplish and what have you. And I would just like to mention a couple of things that were visions of mine that I spearheaded, particularly the Westside Neighborhood Community Center devolved into the days of Dick Hazel Youth Facility. It was an opportunity for the community to come together and have some say-so, because we didn't have anything located on the west side of Salisbury to service the public, and we had to compete with the churches' agendas, the VFW or the Els Club to have a meeting. And then, we had to contend with those people who didn't want to go to that person's church to hold a meeting, or that person's church to hold a meeting, or who felt like they were alcoholics and didn't want to go to the VFW and what have you. So developmental community centers seemed a viable way to have a base where nobody could claim any historical perspective and yet have a buy-in. But as I said, that devolved into the youth facility, and I am yet pleased that whenever Salisbury Middle School has needed to have an evacuation place or a place, a safe haven, they've been able to go to that facility. It has served some purpose. Again, the mentoring project, the first Wycomico County-wide mentoring project, Mr., Men Inspiring Students to Enjoy Reading, was a program that I brought to Wycomico County, copied from Dr. Dolores Richardson out of Havre de Grace. It provided an opportunity for men to come in and mentor boys, and it helped impact the behavior and academic performance throughout Wycomico County. Again, that project also devolved into the Wycomico County Mentoring Project, and that was a project that Daniel Appleby and I helped get started with Henrietta Parker. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to those people and to just share with you some of the things that I have spearheaded. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seeger. Any other public comments?
Yes, this is directed toward Deshaun Riley Smith, Salisbury. Let's review. I asked, as well as many others, for the material that I've been receiving for years that you cut off regarding pre-council meeting information. Prior to my phone call to you before the March 10 council meeting, you reluctantly agreed to include me on the currently-named council media distribution list of March 5, 2025. You did not do so, and in case you did not know the concept, that that's called a lie, and from my brief experience dealing with you, I am sure this is probably not the first one you've ever told. The last, the list includes Wycomico County employees, television news, radio personalities, PAC 14, Chamber of Commerce, and the NAACP, and Greg Basket, who is dead. If any of these people live in the city of Salisbury, they deserve to have the list. They are your boss, just as I am, and they pay you just as I do. I assume you think that getting your name in the press or in front of the NAACP and a dead person is far more important than fulfilling an assignment from your boss. I assume this is a pathetic attempt to have a delusional career elevation by telling people how important you think you are. You probably believe that politicians are known for lying, and that's how they get elected. There are many examples of that at all levels of government, so you think that that makes it okay. I say that sneaky tactics and lying will eventually catch up with you, and I do not want the president of Salisbury City Council to be a liar and embrace censorship to protect him or herself for whatever shortcomings that employee may have as a person. As your boss, I am requesting, for the third time, to be included on the email list every week without fail. Julie English is sitting right there. You can end it by just telling her to send it to me.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name if you're a city resident. Did you state your name if you're a city resident?
Already did.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other public comments?
My name's Caroline O'Hare. I'm a resident of the City of Salisbury. I just wanted to end this evening on a different note. I want to say thank you so much for all that you do. Thank you to the mayor for being part of different programs throughout the city. He had the chance to be at Junior Achievement the other day, where my daughter was participating in Biz Town, which was an incredible event, which is supported by a lot of the people here. I want to thank the council members who are at every event, are at Juneteenth, are at New Year's, are at Third Fridays, all these things that bring our community together. I want to say thank you for supporting these events, because they're not just about fun. They're about letting people engage with different civic groups, with different churches, with different political groups, and with our elected officials. It's also a place where our families can come together to play, to learn, and to grow. So I thank you so much. I just want to say, you guys work tirelessly, as all of us here do, and your hard work does not go unnoticed. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. O'Hare.
Thank you.
And it goes right back at you as well. Thank you. Any other public comments? All right. Seeing none, we would-- Other public comments?
Yes.
Okay. I was trying to--
I wasn't really prepared, but I just wanted to bring up a couple points.
Neither am I, so you should go ahead.
My name is Christopher Dennis. I have a small business, over 50 reviews on Google, five to 4.8 stars, and I just wanted to talk about some of the qualities I've been putting, been dealing with, with running this service and some of the opportunities I've lost through being also a state contractor, just by intentional malice and discrimination. It's recently has intensified since my business has grown, and I've invested more into my business to help grow, to help provide jobs for the community, and, you know, to keep me afloat as well. Yeah, so I don't really know how to touch on that, but I don't know if there's any programs for minority, small business owners that could possibly, you know, help me with some of the issues that I've been dealing with. Also, I would like to touch on the local code enforcement. Recently, I had an inspection done where they ignored multiple health concerns to give the landlord a advantage on the upcoming case I have. I have photos here to show if any of y'all wants to see.
We can review those afterwards, Mr. Dennis. I want to make sure you have your time.
All right. Oh, we've got a certain time. So, yeah, I just wanted to let my voice be heard. Like I said, we just looked it up on Google and just found out that there was a meeting tonight in some way that, you know, we can get some attention pointed to this. And also, I want to touch on the local police department in the neighborhood that I live in, which is an urban area off East Vine. Recently, I had a neighbor that has a 14-year-old daughter that was raped, and he told me that the police department took over an hour to respond, and by the time they got there, the rapist was taking a nap by his daughter. And I've called the police multiple times in this same neighborhood that, you know, has been delayed response on their service that they took an oath on, that I don't think they're taking seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis, for sharing your concerns. If you want to give your contact information to Ms. English, we'll set up a time to meet further, discuss your issues. To Ms. English right there. Yes. Thank you. Any other public-- If you have public comments, once you see the person sit down, you all may just file right there behind them, saying that we don't miss you.
I wasn't sure I was going to speak, so I said I'm number six. There's a number six, I'm not speaking. So Nathan Cox, of course, City of Salisbury resident. I have a, this is a quick question, and maybe I shout it to myself, I guess. Very quick, since apparently the debate went on constantly, and I'm assuming it's kind of over with the building situation we discussed today, the City Council-- we discussed today in the city council meeting, the Folk Festival. So as far as I'm aware, much of the Folk Festival takes place where the new building is supposed to, the sky rise. Maybe wrong, so I'm just curious, Folk Festival attendee, but for those out there who are, where the Folk Festival will we move to in that future? Just curious question. And my first ever, public comment ever made a long time ago. I said, I'm a future filmmaker. I wrote the story about my life from 2005, 2012, took place here. And now I am, I don't know if this is like something I could or should be doing right now on public comments here, but I'm looking for retro pictures of Salisbury from 2005, 2010. So exploring those options, trying to remake and prepare for a future set in a long time from now. So if anyone has any idea how to find pictures of buildings and businesses around, especially in the mall and things like that, in the second half of the 2000s decade, contact me. Thanks, I guess that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
I think I'm getting old of their retro pictures from 2005. Jeez, wow. What the heck just happened there?
Just to underscore, that was a self-proclaimed notion from the mayor. Any other comments from the public? Want to make sure we hear from you. Okay, seeing none, we will transition to the administration comments.
Thank you. Couple things. Ms. English, if, when you get his contact information, you share with me the three items he brought up. There's three different departments that I could address that with, so I'll grab that information, hopefully be able to follow up with the gentleman after that. I'm kind of events-heavy tonight, and I know some of that stuff is scrolling up here. I do want to say Hops on the River, we will not be meeting before that event, so if you're around and enjoy a libation, please come out on April 12th downtown. It's going to be a lot of fun. And the day right after is the Easter Jeep Hop, that is at the zoo. It's a new event, so that could be a lot of fun, too, right there in the afternoon. Maryland Folk Festival, thank you for approving the funding for that event. We're looking forward to gearing that up, and we are in the process of starting to recruit talent for that event. So more to come as that unfolds, so thank you. That is all I have. I'm going to yield the rest of my time to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gettrill.
Thank you. Yeah, I only have one event I want to mention. It was actually for Councilman Jackson. This Saturday, we're going to do the Vietnam Mat Celebration, 821 East West Main. Looking forward to that, as I was last year. So anybody has a chance as a veteran or not a veteran, come on out. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor. All right, we'll pivot to any council comments.
I do. I have some actual concerns and questions. 617 West Isabella. That land was donated to the city, and we had talked about it coming, a memorial garden for Ms. Gretchen Shockley. This has been over six years I have not heard anything in reference to that. I need to know what is going to take place with that land. Nothing's been said, nothing's been done, and it's been kicked down the road. And I just want to have some updated information on that. Her family donated that land to the city, and I'm not asking, and the city's not asking, and the district is not asking for the whole lot of land. We just asked for that corner to have a memorial garden with a little bench there. And remember, she was our first African-American city councilwoman, city councilperson. So this is how we want to commemorate our leaders in our community, our leaders in our city. Something should be left as a memoir for our community and for the city, and for the citizens of the city to remember. This is how history remains, and it goes on, it goes on. Because if we don't leave this legacy, how will other people know that this happened? Because we don't talk about a lot of things. So I think it is really important that we do this for the people, who were our leaders in our city and in our county. My next thing is, I need an update on the hometown hero banners. I haven't heard anything in reference to that. And Memorial Day is right around the corner. And I have not been in the loop with any of it, and I'm the one who brought it to the city council, and I was the one kicked to the curb, and I'm still upset about that. Because I wasn't in on the rim of it, so I need to know what's going on, when it's going to take place, because we have veterans who are asking me questions about this. When I brought those veterans here, the lady that you gave the project to, I didn't even see her at a meeting. I never even saw what a veteran. And I have all the right to be concerned, because I discussed this with 194, 64, 101, 59, the posts that are in the city of Salisbury. And nobody has kept me in the loop with anything. Not one thing, and I need to know what's going on, because I've been asked the question, when is this going to take place? Now, I don't know how you're going to do it, but I need to know ASAP. And as, I'd like to thank the mayor. The mayor has done some terrific work in our, in our district. He has paved some roads that have not been paved in, I want to say, eons. And I really appreciate that, and I called him personally and thanked him for it. And I will continue to thank him, and I've told him several times sometimes, we have to do our own projects and leave a legacy for ourselves. And that's what he's doing. And I don't know how important other people think this is, but it is very vital and very important to our district and to our city. We have trucks going through, tractor trailers going through streets that they shouldn't even be going through. And nothing has ever been done, and I've questioned that numerous of times. Our roads have been torn up from tractor trailers. I understand there are businesses that need to go through. I just went in a, in a area yesterday, no, was it two days ago? And a tractor trailer was going up Hill Street. I'm like, what the world is he doing? He couldn't turn on Lake Street. He couldn't turn on Germanian Circle. I'm looking, I'm like, oh my God, this is going to be the biggest mess ever. So we need to have signs put out saying that no trucks allowed. I'm serious, because this was a big tractor trailer trying to turn from West Main Street on to Lake Street. Then he couldn't make that turn. He tried to go up and turn, but I put on Germanian, I said, Jesus.
I'm thinking Girlfriend. I'm thinking Girlfriend, maybe.
No. I'm like, so we need signs to detour these trucks. And I was trying to get his attention to take him straight up Fitzwater Street, which would have been like an obstacle course for him, but it would have been an easier plan, because that's where Cato oil trucks go and hit the highway. So like I said, Mayor, we need some signage, and we need some signage over in that area to keep those tractor trailers from going through the residential neighborhoods. And also, as the mayor has said, Saturday, which is March 29th, is National Vietnam Veterans Day. I am an auxiliary member. I am a public servant in that community, and I help them with a lot of their projects. And I would love to see, even if you're not a Vietnam veteran, just come out and hear some of the stories. We have some great speakers who are people from the military. Great, I mean, it's a wonderful event to come to. Plus, we'll have some food, too, so you can come enjoy the food. But it's just a wonderful, wonderful event. It's tear-jerking, because to hear some of the stories that some of these Vietnam veterans have gone through will make you want to tear up. So please come. It's at, from 12 to 3 Saturday. They take pictures, they do a lot of things, but it's just marvelous. And then we're going to have a raffle as well. And we'll have a basket there. We're trying to raise money for the building fund. So we're doing some things to help the veterans. So please come out, and it's at 821 West Main Street. It's the VFW, Wycomico County Memorial, VFW Post 101, 59. So make sure you're there, please, because we would love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson.
Go ahead, Michelle.
So over the weekend, I reached out to the administration about disabled parking downtown, and if we can improve the signage for some of the new handicap spaces that we've made, particularly in regards to fines that people would get if they use those parking spaces without any proper, you know, hang tags, either the placards or a disability tag, because it's been brought to my attention that there are people who are parking in these spaces without that kind of identification chronically, on a daily basis. And they're getting tickets, and they're just not, it's not phasing them. So I don't know what the fine that they're getting is right now. I'd be interested to know what their ticket situation is right now, how many of these tickets have been put out, and how much we're ticketing for, because under state law, we're allowed to ticket for up to $250 for each violation. And I don't think somebody would be ignoring that kind of a fine if we could do that. So, you know, I'm really, you know, appreciative of the fact that we've expanded disability parking downtown, and how helpful that is for a lot of folks, both people who work and live downtown, and folks who just come to visit. So if we can get on top of that, I'd really appreciate it. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, this past Wednesday, the council president and myself got to sit down with Senator Angela Alsobrooks and bring some concerns to her through the Eastern Shore Mayor's Association. Bring concerns to her about--
Association municipalities.
I'm sorry. Got it. Never mind. Anyway, so I really, you know, it was really good to be able to sit down with other municipalities and talk about issues that have been happening in our communities that we're seeing, whether it is things like grant funding not, you know, drying up, or other issues that are facing folks in the community that we see. And I'm really glad that Senator Alsobrooks is more than willing to sit down and talk with municipalities, because we are on the ground floor, and she's very open to hearing from us and answering us. So I'm very, very appreciative of that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. And just to note, I was seated on that email you sent to administration. Thank you for sharing the concerns from our constituents. And I did see a car that was parked there in one of those spots on Friday, but I did see a ticket on the front windshield, so.
At the April meeting, we'll be presenting to you some parking updates to the parking code, dealing with all of the changes that we're having downtown. One of the recommendations that was coming forth from Chief Minshew and his team is an increase for people parking in handicap spaces and in fire lanes. So it is forthcoming.
Should be. Couple things. PAC-14, for those of you that are already watching it, you know that the channel has changed to Channel 4, if you're on cable. And if you have digital, just talk into the little mic and ask for PAC-14, and it'll jump right up. I know Caroline mentioned the Junior Achievement Inspire that was at the Civic Center. They had all eighth graders from all over the shore. I mean, you walked in there, and it was just fascinating. The whole premise for this project is to keep students on the shore. So we had businesses, you had the hospital, you had realtors, every conceivable industry that we have on the shore, as far as I was concerned, was represented. And it gave an opportunity for these kids to interact. And I have never seen so many school buses. It was great. I want to give a shout out to Lalea, who is the pilot probe. She's a pilot coordinator. It's from Governor Moore's office. It stands for Public Resources Organizing to End Crime Together. And they did a reentry simulation at SU last week, which was mind-blowing. You were given a scenario as a person, and how much money, and you may or may not have an ID card, you may or may not have a license. And it was the, I guess, the best way to describe it is the frustration or the difficulty for people who have just, you know, come out of jail or have fallen on hard times and may not have what they need to actually go and get help somewhere. So she did a great job on that, and she is, you know, placed here from the governor's office with the Salisbury Police Department. The zoo, I had the privilege of working with Jamie at the zoo this weekend, painting bags and boxes. It was a members' activity where they are going to put treats in these bags or in these boxes. And I would love to see the bear go out the box when that treat, those treats are delivered. And with that said, Andy mentioned Jeeps, new Jeep hop-on in April 13th. They need more Jeeps for that. It's going to be a trunk-or-treat event, only it's for Easter. So if you know somebody who has a Jeep, tell them we'd love it. There's going to be a retirement party also for Shaska, Choska, who is the bear, she's retiring, she's going to Louisiana. The zoo is going to, I know, she's going to have a nice special place down there. So anyway. And the zoo is working on figuring out new ways of getting revenue. They have a pavilion, they have a stage, and they have Holly Circle. So they've just got lots and lots of great things coming on. Keep a lookout for Earth Day activities. And for those of you that are runners, they have a race for the Bison Exhibit to raise money for that. And thank you to Andy and Randy for sending me your little site plan for Carroll Street. I will get off your case.
There'll be more to come on Carroll Street, hopefully by the end of this week, with updates, but that project is starting to move forward. We just need to get our announcements set, and then our sign is put up.
I just appreciate that there's something that's moving and shaking on that. So thank you.
Thank you, council members. And just have a few things. I think some of these things I mentioned last time, but I'm going to just reiterate. We, on February, I'm only reminded, because the press, the news release just came out, but on February 27th, we hosted a council president for the day, and Mr. Jack and I went around to different departments in the city, and he was so excited. And the release just came out, WMDT highlighted that news article. He's been talking about it with his family, so, and his classmates. He was elated. But his grandmother won a fundraiser at the Elks, and that was the prize, was council member for a day. So she gave it to her grandson from Fruitland Intermediates, and he toured the fire department, which they were, he was elated. But I, of course, I'm always excited, and they still haven't let me sit in the big chair, so we're going to talk about that. And he visited the police department, which now he's now an aspiring police officer, because he got to play with the radar gun and sit in the, and again, sit in the truck with the lights on. I still haven't been asked to do that, but, oh man. And we went over to the zoo and got a behind-the-scenes tour of that, and the bear, and the new exhibit, and he was just excited. So, and then he got to sign the legislation and hold the gavel. So that was really fun. I thoroughly enjoyed it, and just, you know, look for more ways we can get involved with our public schools. So thank you to those persons who helped me that happen. And of course, again, congratulations to Mr. Jack, and he was so excited. So I think we have a future council president or mayor there. We met with members of the administration from UMS and have a further meeting with them as well of how we can be greater partners with the city and with their, with their school. And more excitingly, in which Councilwoman, she'll just mention about the zoo and them expanding and just some efforts there, but they're opening up a veterinary school. They're getting really close to that, and I believe we can be extreme partners in that. So meeting with their team next week, and just getting some ideas and some insight from them, but also going to queue that in with our director and with, of course, the ABCD department. So really excited about that. I mean, it's a win-win for us. I mean, there's, I forget the statistics, but there, you know, it's very few vet schools, and it's, for us to have that here locally is going to be tremendous, especially for our zoo, and of course, being one of only two free zoos in the state. The clerk's office has been working very diligently, and it's going to be working with our city staff on a new software program that we got funding approval for. So thank you, administration, for your work there. But we've been doing a lot of research on making sure that how you all interact with council and administration at our council meetings, it's going to be seamless, it's going to be easier for you, agenda viewing, all of that. So again, I want to thank you all for your patience, but we have dedicated some man-hours and, of course, funds to make sure that it's easier for you streaming-wise, and that also comes with alerts. So you all will be sign up, easily sign up for our residents. We'll be able to sign up for alerts, for not only agendas, but more pressing alerts, so, you know, press releases, but special notices, all those things. So again, we appreciate your patience. But again, right now, media gets, you know, those agendas and those alerts now, because we have 17,000 voters and 33,000 residents, and for the clerk's office to send that all to our residents is a task that I haven't tasked them with. But users and residents will be able to click for alerts, and it's going to be streamless. So hold-- able to click for alerts, and it's going to be streamless, so hold on, they're training, they're training our, our staff, but I am so excited for that. So, thank you all for your work into that and, and for getting that done there. Like Councilwoman Gregory said, we spent some time with Senator, US Senator Alsobrooks last week, I, with the Eastern Shore Association of Municipalities, where I, I do serve as a vice president, and one of our goals has been for the Eastern Shore to be more of, more of a community, because again, we recognize that with the state level, but also the national level, we sometimes on the Eastern Shore get forgotten, unfortunately, but when we show up as a force and put all of our resources, but also our concerns together, Annapolis tends to listen a little bit, a little, a little better, so we've been doing that. Part of that is, we want to make sure that we meet with our newest senator, she listened to us, but also address some concerns with the, at the federal level with funding, which again, some of our, some things going on here at the city, but also across the Eastern Shore are paused because of some federal funding, so she, we, she heard from us, and, and she has open door policy, so I'm thoroughly excited for that, and, and for her showing up. On her first week break from session, she came right here to the Eastern Shore, so definitely thank her, and of course, I thank you, Councilwoman Gregory, for attending with me. Meeting with the gentleman, you've seen him come here twice before with the Adopt a Road Program, so meeting with him, I believe Wednesday, to discuss some specifics and, and ensure that with administration on how we can move forward, thoroughly excited about that, again, keeping Salisbury clean, so I've made some time with him to hear how that has been a success in the city that he came from, so I'm excited for that, and we, you'll see some, some release on how we're going to move forward with that program here shortly, so I'm excited about that. Since Councilwoman Jackson mentioned about the memorial, I just wanted to kind of bring up to the surface, the Greg Bassett Memorial, I know we wanted to do something with the circle, so if we can put some energy into that in the very near future, I know it's been a little while.
The signage is done, I think, it's just ready to be put up.
Oh, okay, good, well, thank you. Signage is done. I will share that, because that, that came to me, so I appreciate that. And last but not least, again, with, with our, trying to connect and urging our council members and administration to connect more with the public schools, the, there's a class over at Bennett, I've been to speak with them, and they gave me some insight, because again, I'm young, but they are the next generation, but they had some ideas on urbanization and ways to utilize parts of Salisbury that just haven't been utilized before, so there have been some students who have sent me their ideas on ways to, to utilize this space, and it's been profound. My email has been going off, because I've gotten over a hundred emails from different students and their ideas, which, again, I, I, I welcome it, so I'll be meeting with their class here shortly on, you know, taking the next step from that, so I'm possibly going to invite some of the ones with great ideas here, here, but it excites me when the younger generation has ideas, but also excites me when we, as the generations before them, need to be receptive and listen to them, because we have to make sure that they are part of the process, because we will not be in these seats, we will not be here for, for, forever, and it's important for us to listen to them, so I will be dedicating some time to meet with those classes, but also just make sure that we are in the public schools and, and meeting with, and, and just a part of that process. So, again, thank you all, councilmembers, for, for doing what you do, and for always being a part of that. If there are no other comments or updates, this legislative session is adjourned, and I will call for a motion in a second to convene in closed session number two, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, and any other person on matter that affects one or more specific individuals as authorized by state government article, section three dash three zero five, subsection B and one. The topic of discussion is election board vacancy.
Move. Second.
Motion on the floor is to convene in closed session. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. The Salisbury City Council is now in closed session.